Hey Paul, how are you?
Can't complain. Got my first one. I got the. Got one damn one to go.
She's not in the waiting room.
Who?
Earl. I mean, in the Zoom waiting room. I do have eight people in there, though. Thank you.
Hopefully you have better success.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the work session for Northfield City Council, March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting was properly advertised in accordance with Public Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, in the Press of Atlantic City on January ninth of this year. Due to social distancing requirements related to COVID nineteen, there are limited seats for in-person attendance by members of the public this evening. For this reason, the meeting is also being presented simultaneously as a remote public meeting, livestreamed using Zoom conferencing service and in accordance with the Governor's executive orders and the Open Public Meetings Act. Zoom meeting participants can dial in by telephone and listen to the proceedings, or they can access the meeting using a web browser and be able to view and listen. Instructions on how members of the public could reserve one of the limited seats, as well as how they can access Zoom, have been made available on the municipal website and were published in the Press of Atlantic City. The full text of the public meeting notice has been posted at the entrance to the municipal building and includes Zoom instructions, information on where to find the meeting agenda and relevant documents, as well as instructions on how members of the public could submit comments in advance of tonight's meeting. For those participating via Zoom, all participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. Web browser participants will not be able to share their screens or see the camera view of anyone other than the host, which is the city of Northfield. Zoom participants wishing to exercise their right to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting should wait until the specific announcement is made to open the public comment period. At this time, one by one, any telephone users will be asked to identify themselves and will be unmuted to permit commentary. For web browser participants, comments or questions may be submitted via the chat function, but will not be acknowledged outside of the designated public comment portion of the meeting. Chat users must provide his or her name and address for the record in order to be heard. Any written comments submitted in advance would be read aloud and addressed during the public comment portion of the meeting, and we have none for today. May I have a flag saluted by Mayor Chow, please? Roll call, Mr. Dewey.
Here.
Mrs. Madden.
Here.
Mr. Notaro.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Rutz.
Here.
Mr. Palestina.
Here.
And Mr. Chow. And for the record, we have Chief of Police Paul Newman also in attendance with us tonight via Zoom. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mary. We have a a pretty interesting agenda tonight with a couple of nice items. In particular, the veterans. The naming the honorary plaque, is it? Is that what it's called?
The Purple Heart Way.
Purple Heart Way.
Yeah, honoring our Purple Heart veterans.
Yeah, we actually have have an honored veteran with us today, a Purple Heart, Marco Polo. Okay, we'll be, we can, we'll be addressing that, and you can address that further. With that, can we begin the committee reports? Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Brian. The seniors committee. Trying to see if anybody needs to have a hard time seeing the shots scheduled. And we've got two options going and actually telling us the interregional generational group that can help also, and some of them are actually ministry that have home now. Be contacting the family who the hell. For the rest of the year, we're still looking at the letters and trying to, you know, look at the outcome of that and what happens.
Thank you. Councilman Notts?
Planning Board's pretty quiet right now. Of course, the big story on action news is the retirement of our Housing and Zoning Inspector, Mr. Duttello. We'll be talking more about that later, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Notaro? Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start with EMS. I'm just, I'll start off with, I'm pleased to announce that we've gotten three bids for EMS, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the whole business discussion. Also, for TRICARE, last month, we had a total of one hundred and twenty-nine dispatches, one hundred and eleven calls with patients, eighty-seven transports, ten mutual aid calls to E H T, and thankfully, zero Narcan was administered. I'll go right into the Veterans Park. I'm pleased to see that, you know, I met with the Parks Commission, Parks Committee this past week, and we discussed the Purple Heart Way for the Veterans Park in depth, and I'm pleased to see it on the resolution, on a resolution today. And we have Marco Polo with us today, a Purple Heart, so I'd just like to recognize him today. Also, I met with the Cultural Committee over the weekend, and they want to do the Fourth of July parade this year, so I know at some point, council's going to have to decide whether or not we're going to proceed with that due to COVID. We talked about the social distancing and all those aspects of what we probably will need to do. And, you know, just something that we, you know, should kind of gear up for. I know it takes a while to shut down the road and those kind of things, so got to start preparing now. Joan was supposed to be here tonight, but I don't see her here tonight, but.
She's on, she's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom. Okay, great. So she'll talk a little bit more about that. And with that, I have nothing further. Thank you. Councilman Dewey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Buildings and grounds and fields kind of kind of roll into one tonight. For one, the outlet has been stalled out back with E O C. We are working to reside the Babe Ruth Field and the football field. Hopefully, those projects will be done by mid to the end of April. Also, we're moving forward with a twelve-by-twenty-four foot shed in the back for storage for the P D. It's going to be placed on a concrete pad. The shed comes with a twenty-year warranty and the shingles come with a thirty-year. It's about it's about two hundred and eighty-eight square feet of storage. I believe Mayor Chow was suggesting an eight-five-forty trailer, which is about three hundred and twenty square feet, so we're about thirty square feet shy of that. So I think, in talking with the chief, I think it'll be fine for their storage needs. Met with Fan, they're considering or asking to put basketball courts in the parking lot. This has come up, I guess, a year or so ago. So I am working with the engineer to do some minor survey work out there in the parking lot and see if we can fit something in there without having a major effect on traffic. So I'll update you that with on that as we go along. There was an electrical problem at the museum that has been addressed, and that will be repaired hopefully very soon. Electrician has been notified. He's on notice to get it done. Also, we're evaluating the P D outside door. It didn't need a paint or maybe replacement, so we're evaluating that door as well. Birch Grove Park Advisory Board met last Wednesday. A very good meeting. It's a really energized group of people. Very excited about it. We talked about fundraising, the possibility of purchasing bricks similar to what they do at the Veterans Park, creating an area where we can place those bricks, so that's something that we're looking into. As well as, we discussed the picnic area. We talked several months ago about the possibility of making it a bit more handicap accessible. So that's something that we're going to consider. The engineer's firm, as they're actually doing some existing conditioning survey work out there to see what we can do out there with hopes of applying for the county block grant. Also, there's been an interest in pickleball courts. The engineering firm is looking into that as well, if we can find someplace suitable for those. And I do have an area, it's by Campers Road, as you enter into Campers Road on the left side, so we're looking into the possibility of putting something there. The playground equipment in the Birch Grove Park is in need of being replaced. It's rather old, so we're looking into that. Queen is probably going to get some pricing. I'm not sure what that's going to cost, so we'll bring you up to speed on that. And also, the Birch Grove Park Center. Several, I guess, last year, we brought up about the seniors having interest to have meetings out there. Like to revisit that and see if you guys are interested. I know the acoustics are rather bad, but I think if we put some felt pads up on the wall similar to what they did at Northfield Community School, I think that may improve the acoustics, and it's rather hard to hear in there, so that's what we're up against. So that's what we're dealing with right now, and that's all I have for tonight.
That's a busy schedule.
Tonight.
It's that time of year. First Grove up and running. Very good.
And May will take a nap.
Councilman Smith? Just a question for Councilman Dewey. When you were talking about the basketball courts in the parking lot, is that for Fan? Is that for the, where the football field is? Is that what you're referring to, or what? Where, what parking lot are you referring to for the basketball?
Football field parking lot.
Football field?
There's a couple of areas they were considering on the, as you enter the parking lot on the left side. But I did some rough measurements. I don't think that's going to work so well, so that's why we're going to do some survey work to see where it fits, if it does fit. If it doesn't fit and it's going to be a problem with traffic load, then we're not going to move forward with that.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
So some, from my end, I think some, some more positive developments, I suppose. As far as courts go, we, we had sent, we spoke last time about sending a resolution, a marked-up resolution, back to Hamilton Township for the consideration there. We haven't heard back from them. I do have an email out to them to try to get some direction from them. In the meantime, and I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder here, but I had also received, it's attached to the work session document. There is some numbers that the county has shared with the municipality in terms of the cost of a county court. So you can take a look at that. I think either way, I think one of the reasons that maybe we haven't heard is maybe the other municipalities, Linwood and Hamilton, are also assessing those numbers from the county court level. And in either case, I know we don't have a resolution to it at this point, but in either case, it would look to be a savings for the city. We still have to figure out and assess with the county's numbers, and I know the mayor has been active in that and attending those meetings. But in either case, it would, it would look to be a positive development in terms of the cost, the expense for the city, whichever way it goes. But I'm sure that, Mayor, I'm assuming that you might have something to speak to on that?
It's on the work session.
It's attached to the work. It's attached to the work session.
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, I figured you'd probably do it in your report.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Either one looks like, I mean, both, both good alternatives if we, if one of those can come through. Correct. So moving on, Little League and Babe Ruth, the, the leagues held, I guess, clinics this weekend. So was, had a nice weekend this past Saturday to, to have some clinics, and I know they've started practicing, so that's a positive development for our, for our little ones in terms of getting back on the field for the spring, and they had some nice weather this weekend to actually get that started. So, you know, we continue to hope for positive developments for the Little League and Babe Ruth. The Councilman the Tower mentioned about the EMS. We'll talk about that shortly. Finally, the Northfield Community School had a board meeting last evening, and in, again, what could be a positive development, their decision and what they voted on was to return to a full week, five-day-a-week schedule from eight to three, the normal traditional schedule, and the board did approve that. So I think it would be, and again, it's slightly staggered times for the, the elementary schools opposed to the middle school, but only like fifty minutes more traditional as we've seen in the past from them, which would be a positive development in terms of the expense for our crossing guards. So I spoke with, I communicated with Mr. Bretonis, Superintendent Bretonis. He will forward me the details of the plan so that we can share that. But in terms of the crossing guard issue that we had, this would look to be a more stable schedule in accordance with what we've done traditionally in the past. So we can't, we can't say enough about the job that our crossing guards have done in making this happen during the course of this school year. But right now, their preliminary plan is to reopen this traditional, this five-day-a-week, full-day schedule after the spring break, which would be April twelfth, is what they're looking at as far as a date to resume. So that's a positive development there, I think, for, for the children of Northfield. Yes.
Will this eliminate the, the extra shifts for this?
It would. Yes. And I'm still waiting to hear. Again, I have an email out to Mr. Bretonis. He did respond, but he said he would forward me the information. I, again, once they have to, I guess, finalize the details, but, you know, that, that's a positive development, certainly.
Good to hear.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Brian, Little League, could you find out if they need any work done on the fields prior to the start of the season? Typically, we do some sprucing up of the infields. If we do, we need to get that on schedule sooner than later. I know they have a stockpile infield mix behind the green snack bar.
I know they did have a kind of a work session to get the fields ready on Saturday morning as well. So I will reach out to the president of Little League, Mr. Yard, and see if he needs anything.
I did attend their last meeting, and I think they did, they, they had a contractor out there looking at doing some work. So they may, they may have something in the work, something already rolling.
Did hear from one member, they, Little League wanted to reside the infield of the Little League field, the major field.
Right.
I talked with them, and that's going to be pushed off until next year.
Right, yeah, they're gonna, I think, but in, in lieu of that, they're gonna clean up, clean up the rest of it and redo the mounds and the plate. So I think they are handling that with, within their own funds.
Okay.
If, if, if I hear from someone off forward, that's any additional.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Matt?
Yes. Nothing to report on insurance and safety. Mainly, in regional Board of Education meeting has been rescheduled till this coming Thursday, the eighteenth. And fire department calls for February included four total fire incidents, six false alarm calls, three good intent calls, two rescue incidents, three hazardous condition calls, one service call incident, and zero EMS. First responder incident, zero mutual aid calls, for a total of nineteen dispatched incidents. As far as the library, I attended the Board of Trustees meeting last week, and there's a, there was a discussion on, let me get my notes out, shared services, which is a work in progress, but there were certain pros and cons discussed. I'm not going to get into detail about it now, as, as they say, it's still in the early stages. I do want to mention the summer program. Aubrey has, I had, I'd mentioned it briefly at our last meeting, the Tales, Trails and Tales Summer Reading Program. I, just a short thing I want to read. Join us to explore and celebrate the natural world in our very own backyard. We will, they will be hosting a series of free events at the Birch Grove Park Bandstand throughout the summer season, including storytime, poetry readings, and special guests from local wildlife refuges. I think I said that wrong, but our goal is to become citizen scientists, document the beautiful natural diversity of our neighborhood and community enlightenment. Be on the lookout for more details as the summer approaches. It sounds like a really exciting program. And Aubrey does have two little brochures, one about birds and one of animals. A Birch Grove Park and a little checklist to have probably like little scavenger hunts. And these brochures will be available at the city clerk's office if anybody would like to see them or get a copy of them.
Thank you.
And also, March is Women's History Month, and the statistics, there's a lot about the library. Statistics, give me a minute, I can get this out. Statistics for March, attendance, two hundred and forty-five. Material circulation, eight seventy-eight. eBook circulation, fifty-seven. Audio book circulation, seventy-seven. And fines and fees, forty dollars, and this is really a stark change from February of two thousand twenty. The statistics are, I'll just say the one, the attendance last year was three thousand five hundred and fifty-one as compared to this year. So hopefully, we'll be, this is light at the end of the tunnel with the, with the virus, and the library will be back up to speed.
Hopefully, library will be back, and we'll be having parades again.
For sure. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All I have from committee report, as you'll know, on the, on tonight's agenda, on the meeting agenda, we will be introducing the budget. We did, through a lot of hard work by this council, our CFO, Don Stallmore, her staff, Kathy and Ray, we appreciate everyone's hard work, all the department heads that were coming in at a zero flat budget this year. We still have to wait to see where the other two-thirds of what the city, what, what our taxpayers need to pay, which is the school and the county budgets, but hopefully, they'll be able, they'll be as as a flat as ours, if, if, for lack of a better term. One of the things that did help us, and our residents all pitched in, the collections of taxes were up more than a percent from the prior year. So hopefully, again, even in, even as this pandemic continues, that people are able to make ends meet, and, and that's one indication, is, is that they're able to cover that tax bill. And that's a, that's all I have.
Did we get a, a number from the state yet on the stimulus, on this last stimulus bill, that, the new one that just came out?
Yeah. No, I, there's nothing. It's going through, it's going to go through the county, and I did see an article for some numbers, but I don't know. I don't know how much of that comes to this, or I'm not sure how much of that comes to see and how it gets to be spent. I know I did read, it's not going to come through or be able to be used as part of operating budgets. So I don't know what the restrictions are. We haven't seen anything there yet. But it could be a sizable amount, from what I was reading in different articles online, to see where not a one-point-nine trillion dollars was going.
Yes.
Right, okay, yeah, does, that is the number I saw. Northfield, the number that is earmarked for Northfield would be seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and two dollars. No, and, and no guidance from the state, so there it is.
And there, and there's stipulations on how that can be spent.
I imagine there's quite a few. Again, what I, what I found was a couple of articles, and it did say it wouldn't be for operating, so we couldn't. It may be for reimbursing us for COVID expenses, P P E, or anything like that. I don't know. But we're, we're keeping an eye on it. Certainly could help improve the budget even better than zero.
But it's unlikely that, that we'll be able to just use it if.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, they'll, it'll, again, very similar to the other one, if it's for additional. The other one was through payroll protection, where we had to apply.
Right.
If there was overtime, possibly if there was a sick pay for certain types of, of positions where you could work from home, that type of thing.
Crossing guard expense?
That's right. Crossing guard, which was directly related, so. Any, any other questions? Okay. Moving on to the work session. Old Business. Design Route Station? Okay, yeah. Okay, so we won't discuss that further right now. Northfield Avenue and Route Nine Drainage, anything? No, still waiting for the state. Emergency Medical Services, Councilman Smith and Notaro?
Brian, you want to take the floor, and I'll add?
Well, we had a a, a, a meeting yesterday talking about the bids that did come in for the reissued R F P for EMS services. Again, Linwood is the lead agent there, and they did receive three bids. There was a criteria that we had to implement to assess the bids. And there was one bid that was agreed upon by the council, this is Linwood and Northfield, that, that deserved and was agreed upon, and that was the bid from Inspira, which came in at zero percent cost to the city for three years with the two option years. So the, the other two bids came in at significantly higher costs to the city, and that really was the, the, the driving force behind. But the committee members in both towns were in agreement that that bid was worthy of acceptance, and Linwood will be presenting that as a resolution at their next meeting to accept the bid from Inspira. At zero percent.
Wow. Success. Two zeros tonight.
Yeah.
Brian, are the services the same?
They met all the conditions of the R F P. So, and they, they, it's not a startup, it's, they've been in existence. So they have agreed to, they went in their submission for the, the proposal that they submitted, and that's the understanding. They will meet all. that's the understanding, they will meet all the conditions that we put forward in the RFP.
Thank you. Any other question?
I guess one that I ran was the, uh, for the initial fee, was that negotiated down from the nine fifty, nine hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh, that's not something I believe that we have control over. That's, uh, the, the business itself determines that. I don't believe that's something that can be negotiated. It's not, it wasn't a condition of the RFP.
So then, yeah.
I guess we'll have the terms and conditions, uh, for his next meeting approved.
Hopefully yes, assuming Linwood passes it at their meeting. Uh, we, we have to, um, allow the lead agent to adopt first. But, uh, certainly when we receive that, we can pass that along. Yep.
Thank you, thank you, and, uh, to the, uh, all the members of the committee from both towns.
Do, I don't know, Mr. Anataro, did I cover everything there?
Covered it.
Anything to add?
No, that, not at all. I think you touched on everything.
Uh, we have no additional, uh, update on the lease agreement for Jackson and Fay. Uh, onto the, uh, new business, I'll, I, I just wanna, uh, let's see, we can.
Tom, can I, uh, make one comment about that lease agreement? I did, um, go out there and kinda step off that, and it, the hundred and fifty feet, I think it was, or parking spaces, does include that handicap area, which is separated by, um, there's a drainage inlet right there, so I'm a little concerned about that original agreement.
Yes, uh, as was, yeah, as I was as well, uh, and what constraints that has on that, what does, that parking requirement has on the, on the business.
Okay.
Uh, any, anything on the, on new, new business as far as the grant opportunities? Nope, okay. And, uh, one thing before we get into the, uh, I wanted to address with council is, uh, um, before we do the county courts, uh, the fan was, was questioning, uh, about doing some coin drops, so I guess that's gonna be, it's that time of year where different entities are gonna be looking to do that as part of their annual fundraising. Certainly, uh, I know Little League did one last year, or year before that is, but I know they're doing a full season this year, so, just wanna present that to council, keep that in mind, and, uh, see what your thoughts are on, um, as they start to put their traffic plans and such together to include social distancing. Uh, if, uh, before we go telling them to go get their approvals and such from this county and as well as this council, is the council, uh, interested in listening to those, are you interested in ha, in allowing coin drops, thinking that maybe things will be more opened up by the time the coin drop times occur?
Well, we have a process in place, so have they applied yet?
They haven't applied, but, uh, as part of that process, again, it's gonna be a little different than every other year.
Mm-hmm.
So my, my main thing is you're more of a straw poll to see if it's time well spent by the organizations doing that, since they're.
For them to put the application in, and they wanna get an idea whether or not we're, we're gonna say okay.
Whether or not we're even.
I'm, I'm a yes.
Willing to listen.
Well, the fact that we have a process in place, it means we're willing, but I don't think a straw poll is necessary to fill out the application and go through the process, it gets approved or it doesn't. So.
That's all, that, just seeing if there's any major objections, that's all. Okay, moving on to the shared courts.
Thank you, Council President. First, let me just open statement that throughout my years serving on city council and now as the mayor, I am very proud of all the past administration and the current administration in their efforts to save Northfield taxpayers' money, uh, in terms of consolidating and shared services. I really truly believe that Northfield stands out as probably the exemplary, uh, municipality that has been involved in so many shared services that have benefited not only our city, but also Atlantic County. Before you, you have a, and I stress, a working document since pursuant to my last report on the Atlantic County cost to operate municipal court. Uh, we have, since of my last report, we've had added, um, municipalities who have submitted data that the county needed to formulate a more, uh, working document that expresses the cost savings of the proposal for the Atlantic County Municipal Court Administration. Currently, we are still, as we have, you probably have read in the Atlantic City Press, the most recent editorial, about the support about consolidation in shared services that would provide the citizens of not only Northfield, but Atlantic County. This is a trend that I think is very important. There are obviously pros and cons to any shared services, but overall, I truly believe, and I will address this particular shared service that I have been involved in since the get-go and being a member of the subcommittee, I think this is something that, uh, is what we need. Uh, we all know that we, as a municipality, we are required to provide some type of municipal court services, uh, but it is not a, uh, i- in most cases, we have lost money. And, uh, personally, I don't think, uh, at this stage of game, from my years of experience and knowledge, that, you know, we wanna stay in this business. Um, so having said that, I think that this proposal that has been submitted by, uh, and underwritten by the county executive, I think this is something that is, uh, that we should really seriously look into. Uh, I'm not gonna go in great detail because my plan is this, now that we have out of the twenty-one municipalities, five of them, uh, I have not expressed any interest for various reasons, uh, but I think that at some point in time, as we start to get more firmer in, information, uh, that I will bring in the representatives from the Atlantic County, uh, side to make a presentation and answer any questions that you have in, to further in detail. Uh, we are, as I said, we are in the process, and we have the support of Senator Brown, as well as the Senate President, uh, Mr. Steve Sweeney, uh, to propose legislation that will allow the County of Atlantic to be the, one of the, uh, first, if not, uh, in here in South Jersey, uh, a municipal court system. We have the facilities already, uh, there may be some little bit of fine tuning at the county building in Maze Landing, but that is the proposal. There are two rooms that will provide five days of services, uh, with, and determination is made as far as how many, uh, uh, court, uh, excuse me, how many judges we will need and staff and so forth. That still has to be fine tuned as we get more and more municipalities involved here. One of the questions that was asked and concerns, uh, that I received from city council is the travel time and how we're gonna get our officers to the courts if necessary. And, uh, one of the, uh, judges pointed out that, uh, in his instruction, he's involved in, um, teaching new judges to be a municipal court judges throughout the state of New Jersey, is that the virtual is here to stay. This is something that, uh, we would institute, for example, here in Northfield, uh, as well as other municipalities that would be participating, virtual, um, responses as far as, uh, there, we, uh, you know, come into court, so they would, we wouldn't have necessarily have, uh, our officers go to the actual court physically unless it really mandates.
Right.
Uh, but again, these are questions and, and positions that can be better explained when I bring in the officials, because this working document, and I stress to you that this working document that you have before you, uh, was some of, was the holdup, or one of the main holdups in terms of us getting, uh, some more information. But you can see that, for the most part, uh, municipalities can be, i- if they were all to join, can be anywhere from eighteen percent to all the way up to, uh, I believe seventy-eight percent savings. For Northfield, there's a thirty-three, approximately thirty-three percent savings, uh, right now. Um, so this is, and you, and you can see, and I, and I wanna emphasize that the proposal that the Councilman, uh, Smith had brought with Hamilton Township, um, you know, the percentage that they would save as well as Linwood. Personally, I'm just gonna say, this is a personal opinion, but if a municipality can save that amount of money in percentages, it's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer. Um, so, um, I am a strong advocate of this, and I would encourage city council to be much more interested and filter any questions. We are still having continued, um, meetings, but my plan is now, since we now have this doc, document, uh, and as they further fine tune this, uh, I will have a representative's come to Northfield City Council meeting to answer and make the presentations as far as the bullet, and I, and I also requested as far as a preliminary report, uh, some bullet, uh, statements as far as the pros of having this municipal court. And again, I, and I understand, there are pros and cons in any shared services, but I think that these benefits, the cost savings, as well as the physical workings of this proposal of a court, uh, in Amazing is a win-win situation for everyone that would be involved here. Now, um, my question to them was, when would, if we do go forward, when will this come forward, as far as when would this become a reality? They're right now, with all this data right now, their proposal is at the end of the year two thousand twenty-one, if not sometime in the beginning of the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. So this is a, a, a very strong reality that will move forward. Uh, I don't know if all these municipalities with this data is going to be involved, but right now, obviously, they have expressed interest by providing the data that we see here.
Mayor, do, do they have, does the county have a deadline or a date when they can actually give us a final number? I know you said it's, it's a working document, moving document.
There is no, uh, a dateline right now, because pursuant to my last report, I believe five or six municipalities have now submitted data and expressed interest. Galloway, Hamilton Township, Linwood, uh, just to name, uh, some, uh, just, uh, and Summers Point are some new municipalities that have now come online. Now, keep in mind, we've started this back in September of last year, so obviously, uh, you know, municipalities that for whatever reason are now becoming much more interested as this, as this becomes much more firmer type of working document or I, or proposable, that county is now going forward on there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The, the percent savings, what's the formula? I, I, I guess it's based on.
The, the percent savings, uh, these data is, is, um, was submitted based on our past three years of, of, of the costs and the number of cases and so forth. So, you know, just like anything else, you know, things go up and down, but for three-year data, this is what we're, that they're working on. Yes, sir.
What happens to the revenue collected?
Revenue collected, we'll go back to Northfield. That is our revenue. But again, Councilman, uh, you know, we've had bad years, I should say bad years, but low years, high years, and so forth. And, you know, with all due respect, with the, with the court system throughout the state of New Jersey, a lot of things have changed that have, that there's no more revenue. You know, for example, you, as we all know, that there has been a process where, uh, now subpoenas and, and, and that of, are, are over ten years old are now being discarded, that we're no longer pursuing that. Uh, and part of that is based on numerous reasons and, and so forth, in terms of costs and, or worse, uh, in terms of, uh, of opinions of how they were issued.
Mayor, just a quick question, and, and it kinda segues with, uh, Councilman Anata's question. You look at our numbers, it looks like we're operating at approximately an eleven or twelve thousand dollar deficit over those three years. If we pay the county the ninety-eight thousand dollars that they're asking for, and we continue to generate the hundred and thirty-five in revenue, does that mean that we get that thirty-five thousand dollar excess?
Yes.
So we could actually go from negative eleven or twelve thousand dollars to plus thirty-five?
That is correct, but again, as I said, you know, every year fluctuates because, you know.
Yeah, I'm just using these numbers.
Yes, but this is based on a three-year report in the past three years. As you see in the first line, the current three-year average cost, and then we see, uh, in the next line, the average number of cases from, and this is where the three-year report, from two thousand seventeen up to two thousand, uh, twenty.
You know, that's not a line item.
I'm, I'm nineteen, excuse me.
That's not a line item on the sheet.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they, they don't kinda put on here what you're going to get back from the evidence.
Yes.
Uh, might be interesting to verify that.
Any other questions, uh, for me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was a question as far as the software, the ticketing, uh, system that we have in our three cars, and then if that was compatible without going out for, for more expenditure on that?
Yes, we are compatible. Um, the, the system that we have, the Phoenix system, is now the latest, and they are aware of my concern, as well as the other cities, about the ticketing process and how it will be processed. Everything, uh, will be kept separate in terms of, this is Northfield, this is X, Y, Z municipality, and so forth.
Did, Mayor, do you know if it's, I, I just was trying to look at the differences in the savings, it just seems as though, are they just charging a cost per case?
Yeah, based on cases and so forth, yes.
Every municipality, so.
Right.
That's probably why our savings is lower, because our cost may not be as high.
Well.
Per case as some other.
You look at some municipalities, like for example, um, Waymouth, um, you know, Waymouth only, and the course average was a hundred and fifty-two cases there, so, you know, their cost savings would be, would not be reflected as much as if you look at Egg Harbor Township, alright, how many cases they have.
Well, I was looking at it, I looked at it from, if I look at Egg Harbor City, their, their cost, their average cost right now is a hundred and forty-six thousand five, roughly, and ours is a hundred and forty-seven thousand seven, and we have about two thousand more cases than that.
Yeah, and again.
Eight hundred versus eighteen hundred, so.
And again, as I said.
Something to keep in mind is why we don't have as much savings in here from a percentage standpoint.
Well.
Our court is much more efficient.
As you look at Brigg and Tean, they're saving seventy-eight percent.
Right.
I mean, that's, it's an indication.
Yeah, and, and also, yeah, as one, uh, mayor from Estelle Manor said, uh, two hundred and thirty-four cases, that they have a very, um, low amount because they have very, uh, law, quote, law-abiding citizens, you know, that's a joke for them, but, but we also have to remember that we may have more cases, but how many of those cases are being brought back to the municipality? You know, there, there could be warrants out, and, and we have, you know, a different situation there in trying, trying to get them, so that's something to take in consideration, but, you know, these are all numbers or, or data that, uh, fluctuates every year.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, yeah, I mean, it's certainly, uh, certainly worthwhile endeavor to, to, if we can get this through to fruition.
Yes. So, um, we, we do have, um, every month, we, we've been having, uh, bi-weekly meetings, and, um, I will, you know, certainly invite you, Tom, and, and Brian, if you wanna get involved and, and, and listen to the discussion and so forth of the, of the committee meetings, but, and participate, uh, but we are getting closer and closer. I feel really, really good, especially with this latest, uh, data sheet. And again, I wanna emphasize, this is a working document, but it was much better than what I had, uh, submitted to you guys, uh, uh, at a previous meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, one of the questions, you mentioned Stephen Sweeney and Chris Brown being behind it. It does require legislation passed on the state level.
Correct.
Do you have any indication, have you received any indication of the status of that legislation, when we can anticipate that being voted on, uh, and, because everything is contingent upon the state legislature approving of this legislation?
Uh, I don't know when it's gonna be brought up. I do know that, uh, Senator Sweeney has made the, the proposal. Uh, so right now, it's, it's in the legislator's hands, um, but I, that's a good question, and I will bring that up at our, my next meeting.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
No, I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Mayor Chow for working on this. It's been a lot of, uh, hard work, so I appreciate everything you're doing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, well, as I said, I, I, I'm a very big advocate of shared services. And if it's going to save our city money, and again, there are pros and cons to everything. Uh, but I think the pros and the benefits of this will outweigh the, the cons.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Okay, uh, at this point, let's uh, please refer to your agendas. Approval of the minutes, Councilmen Otis, Councilwoman Madden. Resolutions, Councilmen Smith and Natara. Payment of bills, Councilman Dewise and Perry. And meeting notices, Councilman Perry. Are there any items on the agenda? Any uh, in the consent agenda that anyone would like pulled or just, or would like to discuss?
Um, the one thing I want to uh, bring up, Councilperson, is um, I did make a uh, an inquiry with the county about if we had to do any uh, additional approvals to put additional signs on Oak Avenue. In other words, get the county's permission, if you will, um, to put their signs on there. Um, the signs are our responsibility, they're in our jurisdiction. Um, so the county has no say in that. They did suggest, however, that we send a letter to the exact county executive just to bring him up to speed as to what we're, we're doing, and we did do that.
Thank you. Uh, with that, the public session will now be open. This meeting is now open to the public for anyone wishing to speak on any subject. Please state your name and address for the record and observe the five-minute limit per speaker.
This is T. Taggart, I live in Northfield. I have two concerns. Uh, one, are we, are we going to do anything for a resolution or something with the new rule of marijuana being passed? Is Northfield going to let any business sell?
Any business what, I'm sorry?
Sell.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Marijuana. I'm just a little concerned with that because I've seen it in other states and how as soon as the store opens, there's a line from three o'clock in the morning until they sell it off. And it really is going to be a heavy traffic area. Once it becomes, you know, once they get their license and from the state, or the state to the dealer. I mean, Ocean City already passed a bill that there will not be selling in Ocean City. So I'm a little concerned with that because we have a lot of stores that, you know, pop up, you know, that are now selling tobacco because that's who gets the first bid, is anyone who sells tobacco. And we do have a lot in Northfield. And I just think it's, we, we gotta get in front of it because you're going to have a problem with it and the traffic. Northfield is going to be pretty, pretty heavy.
Yeah.
There's, there's two ways to look at it. There's a, there's a revenue perspective and then there's that perspective. And I, I agree. Is, is that what's, is that what?
I'm certain.
Northfield or is it not, you know?
I'm certain that's something we'll, that we need to discuss here.
I think Brian brought that up, uh, a, a meeting or two ago. And uh, I, I think we were going to put a committee together for that, right, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I was down in Chicago and they legalized. They said people were lined up from three o'clock in the morning. I mean, around the bend in two neighborhoods. And, you know, people don't really want that. I mean, yes, I know it's going to do revenue and, you know, if, if you have ten stores that can sell, you know, tobacco, whoever was here first or whatever, you only get three, it's something, but really, because people most of the time want that.
Well, we, we, we certainly will address it and we need to. Uh, I know that it did, I believe it passed in Northfield by two to one. Um, but regardless, we, we still have to do something in conjunction with what our current codes are, what additional codes the planning board and zoning board have, are anticipating, as well as input from our uh, police department. So, um, certainly what we've seen so far publicized uh, as far as uh, what the police department's involvement is, is concerning. So we definitely need them involved because how hard they're going to make their, their job is going to be with this out on the street.
Then here's my second.
So we are, we're not going to, we're, it's, we're not going to ignore it.
Well, the follow-up of that, we should see what the state's going to do as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that they're going to pretty much, it's what each town wants to do. Because I know Atlantic City already has a few spots open and they're really, they're like, Atlantic City's pushing for it.
I'm sure.
So then my second question is, we have halfway houses popping up everywhere in, in Northfield. So, and I know like the Hanson Foundation is really pushing for, they just bought fifteen homes in Bedford. And then I go, like, right across the street from my house, all five houses went on the market and four sold. So, do, when they come for a CO, is it going to be for a family, is it a business? I mean, because halfway houses, and I'm all for helping the addicts because I actually do do that.
Yes.
But halfway houses have the highest rate of, you know, becoming OD's because there's nobody follows the rules. Even though the state has rules, they're never followed. But if they're popping up through that, right on Burton Avenue has one, Fairbanks has one, Jackson has two, they're, they're popping up everywhere.
Uh, they're unfortunately popping up in every town.
Right, but you guys can stop and how many come into the town?
Nope.
I don't think we can. I believe it's.
I know the state did a shutdown during COVID that they weren't opening anymore because they weren't giving them a payment.
Right, but we can't discriminate, we can't discriminate against them to, and we can't prevent them. As long as, as long as the properties meet the code for the, that particular property. Our code enforcement, that's, that's routine.
Has a strict guidelines.
Yes.
But who's wa, making sure the state is, the people follow, there's no alcohol, there's no this. I mean, there's a whole strict guideline of what these addicts can and can't do.
Does the landlord have to, uh, I, I think the landlords have to abide by the state. If they're going to rent it as a halfway house.
They're not, well, the, the state pays them eighty dollars a day per room. So.
I think this.
People have to pay also to. It's actually their foundations or their people, corporations that are buying a large amount of homes in areas because they make so much money from the state.
Chris, yeah, excuse, it, it is state-regulated, so we, we don't have a lot of, a lot more that we can do other than make sure that they meet the, the city's codes. But once they are, the, the state oversees them. So it's the state's responsibility to come down and make sure they're abiding by the rules. If, if, I'm sure there's a number to call at the state to report something that if, if you know that something's going on that's not supposed to. But uh, unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction there, the state has it.
Well, I thought these towns have like their own, they say they only want so many, just like section eights. I mean, you can only have, good state stuff, and say they can only have.
They, they, I think that rule is telling you how many you, your minimum that you're required to have. They don't care if you, you can make your whole town that, as, as far as the state's concerned. I don't think they, that's up to the town. They just require, they, they set the minimum standard. We have to meet the minimum standard, but we don't, there's no, I don't, I don't believe there's a maximum on that.
No, all right.
On the, on the, on either of those, actually.
And you're going to have, that's going to become, where's this going to become a business town? Because a lot of people are going to move out because, I mean, I can't, like I said, I already have one on my street. And it's like a big party atmosphere the entire time. Do I call the state?
I will, I, 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 I don't know that, but I will find out.
Yeah, and that's the only thing, I mean, I, you know what, and like I said, I'm all for them, but they do have a high rate.
Yeah. If, if there, if there is something that's not going on, if there's something going on that's not appropriate, then I'll find out what we need to do to report that and make sure that it, it is appropriate. Bring it, yeah, follow the rules.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members. My name is Marco Polasprilliani, I'm a Vietnam veteran and veteran's advocate. And I'm vice chairman of Atlantic County Veterans Rescue Board. Uh, unfortunately, I'm at a disadvantage here tonight because I probably missed about ninety percent of what was said. And the reason being, I was wounded five times in eleven days and spent eleven months in a hospital. Now, that's not to impress you, don't let you know way I'm deaf, okay? First of all, whenever we came in for veterans, I wanted to express my deep gratitude. You've always been there for us and my fellow veterans. And tonight we're talking about Purple Heart Way. Well, I don't know if you know, but to receive a Purple Heart, you have to be either wounded or killed in battle against the enemy of the United States. And from our ocean of days to now, approximately one and a half million were killed, another and a half million were wounded. So I don't have to go on, you're intelligent people, you'll stay what I'm saying. I want to express again my gratitude to all of you, not to take too much of your time, but you, each and every one of you should be really proud, not just for yourself, the city, of your children and grandchildren, especially in these times. We're really living times where children need to understand, all the screeners we have is not free. By these purple, our sign, they're going to resolve everything, but it certainly is a step in the right direction. And I want to take a moment just to thank Mr. Notaro, the councilman. He reached out to me, so I really appreciate that. That was very great help from you. Have any questions of me or my board, Atlantic County Rescue Board, I'd be more than happy to, to answer if you're screaming at me, though.
I don't have any questions, but I certainly want to uh, thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I, I'd like to reiterate that, how, I, you, you were expressing your gratitude to us, but the gratitude is for yourself.
He said the gratitude.
We're very grateful to you. The gratitude goes the other way, thank you.
We're going to work together. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I appreciate all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bob McDonald, um, I live at eight oh eight Maple Avenue. Um, I'm here tonight uh, to discuss uh, the storm drain that they installed in front of my house and all along Maple Avenue. I was talking to the foreman from Southern State, who was doing the, the work there. And uh, they, I was asking him, uh, what, how you want to do this and what are you going to, how's it going to look when it's done? And what, over the course of years, I had flooding has gotten worse and worse on Maple Avenue because the storm drains across the street were going down and coming back up in front of my house. And over the course of years, it has ruined my curbing, even though it was railroad, not railroad, uh, pressure-treated ties, it was installed really nice, my pavers. And all my sprinklers are all busted and everything when they finished the job with Southern State. So when I asked the foreman, how you want to finish the job, I'm looking for concrete curving now instead of the ties because the flooding had destroyed everything. Plus, when they ripped everything up, they's kind of destroyed. And I have pictures here to show you that. All my, all my sprinklers on the whole front of my house were all ripped out. The pavers not installed back in correctly. And so what I'm asking you, he told me that he's just going to put the ties back in. It will not look right. It doesn't look right, it wouldn't. And it's not, uh, it's not appropriate, let's put it that way. So what I'm asking you to change whatever he said. Because I talked to, uh, Rami, and he said to come to the meeting and ask you to do it, you know, the way that I think it should be done. So it's a hundred and fifty-eight feet of curbing. They want to put concrete, I don't know how they're going to finish it anyhow. But I understand that they're going to put concrete there. Now, uh, you, may I ask?
Please.
Uh, what we are proposing of the plans, there's a line item. When they remove railroad ties, they're damaged or in bad shape, they are going to replace them with brand new. So when they pull some of the railroad ties and they're damaged, they're going to be putting brand new railroad ties. Uh, that's the line item, but we are not, we don't. Only time we install concrete curving is when we have an issue with drainage and need to direct the water. Uh, we just replaced, we just installed the drainage pipe to deal with the problem. Now, the, the funny problem is going to go away because now we're directing the water from that intersection to the discharge area. Basically, uh, Fairbanks and Maple have four outlets without any other discharge. So the rain gets into the inlet and keeps building up, then it finds a way to run along the gutter line to Jackson. So at this point, what we did is we installed a plaza discharge, so this situation won't happen. Uh, the line item will be when they come back to the store, we won't pave it until it's at least sixty days. We need the area to settle. Then they are going to repave the whole road. And they will pave an area, they will install the railroad ties on top of the pavement. And if, and all your damage, the sprinkler, sprinkler system, that will be fixed by the contractor, that's his responsibility. We will need to buy that up for a minute.
I think to correct them, this is my opinion, in the right way, you know, just to put concrete curving, you know, I put up this, I've lived in that house for forty years and put up with this flooding. And I think just to do it haphazard, that's my opinion, my words, to just put the ties back in there and they got them up the street, they're up against a fence. And they're, yeah, they're all, you know, up and everything. That's because of the flooding, that's because of the flooding that we, our, my family and his, and that whole street was up for, for years. So I think to do it the right way would be put the curving, if you want to do it, put the curving in, then it. It's just, they do it around the corner, they did it around the corner. Burton and all these other side streets, why wouldn't they do it the same way there?
The curving would be, they, and it was carving was there, even though it's not.
I, I think it's really haphazard and it's, uh, I don't know what to say about that, but um, I think they should do it with concrete curving. It's only, you're only asking about a hundred and fifty-eight foot, that's based on their numbers of like six thousand nine hundred. Well, they should have saved, why, why didn't they figure that out?
Because it's not, it's not needed, we've only installed curving, we don't just install curving wherever the railroad ties, we install them when they're needed. And uh, this is not my money to spend.
I, I understand, I'm not, I'm not saying anybody.
And we try to utilize this, we can't solve the problem.
I'm trying to make Northfield look good, I, I take by my property and now if I show you the pictures of what it looks like and now I'm going to put up with just the way it looks like in front of.
Uh, it's going to be sixty days, I'm sorry. Yeah, I understand, just say it right away, otherwise.
But that's what I'm saying, I think the right thing to do would be to put the curb in there before we paved. That's why I told you, Rami, because I didn't, I didn't know how they were going to proceed.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I mean, we, they, a, a, as the engineer was saying, they'll put it back to the way it was, improve, with the improvements to the drainage and the street.
Is, is it possible that the resident could work with a contractor to get concrete at a better cost because it's already there?
What happens if I leave the pay maybe as well? Does that be acceptable to somebody? I mean, I, I want my property to look good, I don't want to.
What's the normal protocol for curbs and sidewalks?
Curb and sidewalk is a responsibility of homeowners.
Of the homeowner. Unless, of course, we are.
Unless it's a, a design feature that requires changing, like Rami said.
And also, they, they can also, also, when they put that, set their third drain and they change the elevation to cause a flood more, we would actually look over them, the ties and everything. We are, we are reprofiling the road when we take it. But answering questions, one of the costs of the action, ask the contractor, take the line item to replace the railroad ties and see what the difference between that and the curving, so that they get credit. And we'll let you know the number. Interesting, I can get that number and be a probably a better number than giving a contract to the job. And hopefully it's not that drastic.
Well, let's work with that and see where we come.
Figure it out some way.
If you can do that, talk to the contractor and then we'll see.
I mean, I, I go along the bike paths, they got curving all along, there's no problem, you know? They put brand new, hacky, put brand new curving all along there, no big deal.
I've already gotten complaints that um, the, a portion of, of the bike pair for the wall that I showed you is not being, uh, with curbing. Where they, where they ended here, they stopped, uh, I, I forgot exactly where it is, but the rest of the, uh, the street that's going to, that's under a grant is not going to get curbing. And so I have residents who are up in an arm and saying, you know, why is it that there's curbing down there further and, and we're not getting it? And, and I had the same number of complaints in the, uh, recent, uh, last year's paving with Shepherd Circle. Uh, only a, only certain sections where there was a drainage problem where curbing was put in by the grant. And uh, I have almost all residents long Shepherd or complained that they didn't get curbing.
And the only, the only reason that curb was put in is. And the only reason that curb was put in is because the design required it because the elevation changed.
Right. I understand that. And that's what I'm saying. That's, that's why they, my explanation to them.
What we'll do is, as Rami had said, he'll talk with the contractor and then we'll figure out where we are from there. But we will keep you involved in it and find out where we stand. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Aubrey Tyers, three Park Road, Linwood. And I am the librarian at Allen Brown Public Library. I haven't been here in a long time. Sorry for that. But I wanted to share some good news with City Council that we will be resuming our normal operating hours beginning April 1st. So we'll be open Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. And our tables will be made available through a registration process for one hour sessions. We believe this will be helpful for the students and tutors, especially seeing that the schools are getting back into things. They can come in and reserve a table as long as there's a purpose for that for one hour sessions. Mask requirements and social distancing regulations will remain in place. We're also hosting a citizen science celebration, April 24th at the bandstand in Berthgrove Park. We, we're excited about this in addition to the library's summer reading program, Tales, Trails and Tales. Councilwoman Madden mentioned. That's currently being planned and will include Sunday morning storytimes, Wednesday evening poetry readings, bandstand, as well as self-directed activities all summer for all ages under the citizen science workshops. So you'll be getting a lot more information, official information coming out from the library in the next week or two as we finalize those. I'm also here to speak on maintaining the library's status as a municipal library. I know the council's in the exploratory mode of this, so I just wanted to state a few general remarks. I keep wishing that people like Liam St. John or Joyce Poland or Carol Patrick or Bob Webb were here to kind of bounce back and forth thoughts and ideas with. Because these residents were instrumental in building and preserving our community's social infrastructure. My concern is that a shift to the Atlantic County Library System would separate the library from municipal involvement in activities like the Cultural Heritage Committee's Fourth of July Parade. A social infrastructure invites opportunity for strangers to become neighbors. It can yield the culture of a community by forming organizational and personal connections. Northfield's social infrastructure is deeply rooted in the library, playgrounds, ballfields, historical society, Berthgrove Park. How would the city of Northfield prevent these cornerstone of our social infrastructure from degrading? Other communities with independent libraries like Atlantic City and Longport are including historical societies under their umbrellas to preserve their rich histories. In places like Colorado, library programs are being held in public parks in conjunction with schools and municipalities to promote the benefits of outdoor education while bolstering their natural resources. City Council is tasked with a heavy challenge of guiding a municipality to make decisions that will best serve the community's interests. If council pushes to relinquish control of the one social institution that can serve to bind our social infrastructure, potential financial savings will not offset that loss. According to the library programming policy, the library is required to hold a weekly storytime as well as two programs a month. In 2019, we held a record 547 programs with 45,357 people passing through the library. I don't know what the county expects of its branches, but I know our team smashes all expectations as an independent entity. We have received 13 awards and grants since 2014. As an independent library, we are responsive to community needs in creative ways. So I just urge City Council to consider the concept of social infrastructure as it relates to our city's planning. I've just finished Palaces of the People by Eric Kleinenberg and I highly recommend it. As our neighborhood continues to evolve, there are specific actions we can take to ensure healthier residents, stronger economy, less substance use disorder, decreased crime. Actions and investments can be made to bolster community involvement that would help to ease the burden of our city police department. Another organization the library has worked with on programs such as Bike Safety. With the city of Northfield having in its arsenal a municipal library, the library can be used as a partner to strengthen and expand the supportive social infrastructure, which would benefit all residents, all departments within our city. I just wanted to make sure that I introduced myself to all of you. And I know we haven't gotten numbers from the county yet, but we may come in. And as more questions arrive, my door is always open to any of you who want to stop in or call the library or send an email and have a question about any of the potential changes that could result from moving into the county library system.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have one member from the Zoom chat who would like to speak. It's Joan Brennan. Mrs. Brennan, I'm going to unmute you. Hang on just a second. Okay, I did send you an unmute request.
Hi, good evening. This is Joan. How's everybody tonight? Joan Brennan, 116 Dolphin Avenue. Can you hear me?
Hold on. Mrs. Brennan, hang on just a second. You want to try again?
Joan Brennan, 116 Dolphin Avenue?
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so I actually have a lot to cover and it actually is for the cultural committee. One of the things that, you know, the librarian just noted that we lost so many members of our cultural committee and workers for the city of Northfield in this past year. So we had a meeting last Saturday and we discussed the budget for the cultural committee, which was never submitted. I sent an email to Shannon this afternoon about the last three years of budget for the cultural committee. I sent an email also asking her about a couple of different things, donations that were made on behalf of my mother to the, for the museum and the cultural committee. Because the money have, I'm assuming that it got put into the city account, but when I spoke to Roy Clark, he said that he thinks that the checking account that we had for the cultural committee is now empty because we haven't had any fundraising in the past year. So I sent her an email asking her that question as to what happened with the funds. I also wanted to talk about the three things that are going to happen before the parade, which is the first baby, the citizen of the year, and the Mr. or Mrs. Fourth of July for this year. We always do that ahead of the parade. And to discuss whether or not there is a budget for the parade at all this year. And I did have Erland on the meeting along with Mr. Natarin, you know, in person at the meeting. And he didn't seem to think that there was going to be a problem with the budget for the parade if we can actually do the parade for the Fourth of July. Another thing that I wanted to talk about or bring up is the concerts that are, that are usually picked and held at the bandstand. There was a budget of approximately $5,000, according to my sister Peg, who would submit all the paperwork out to these different bands. And so I, I wanted to know if there was still a budget for the bandstand. And I think lastly, I wanted to just bring up the fact that the building has some damage to it. The museum has some damage to it. Mr. Natarra offered to go around with us on Saturday, or actually, we could just, I don't know if he necessarily can make it there on Saturday or not, but we need to go around the outside of the building because there is some dry rot. There's some issues with the, the building itself. Some of the stuff needs to get scraped and painted and all that stuff needs to be done. A lot of it is usually done by us, the volunteers, but there are few and, you know, very few of us left. So I don't know if anybody has any comments about any of the things that I'm bringing up, but it's all imperative. We all need to get, you know, moving on it. And that's it. That's really what I wanted to say. And hopefully somebody can give me some answers on some of this stuff because apparently there really isn't anybody, you know, we're trying to take over this and normally these are handled by Carol and Joyce who are past. So that was it. That was all I had to say.
I would like to make one comment, a general comment. And as Joan pointed out, we've lost some, some very actively involved people who were, who contribute to the formation and organization of the band as well as part, I mean, excuse me, of the cultural committee as well as with the bandstand and the parade. When we stopped the Memorial Day Parade, I got a lot of criticism as to why we did this. And I'm not going to go into great detail. But with the Fourth of July Parade, once again, all the critics that condemned as far as stopping the parade, you know, I've asked them to be involved, volunteer. You know, just the Fourth of July Parade is a big undertaking.
Huge.
For those of you out there in the public who have criticized, you know, about not having a parade and various, various different functions, the cultural committee has been involved in this. And I'm pleading, you know, if you want to see a parade, you want to see these activities continue within our beautiful community, you need to volunteer. You need to get involved. Because Joan and Roy cannot do it by themselves. And I'm just making that as a comment from my personal experience with, with the committee.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of volunteerism. It's, it's getting cars for the parade itself, getting, making sure that everybody's organized. It's, it's a lot of work. It's, it's, if we, if we are allowed to do the parade, there would be an email sent out asking for volunteers on Facebook. Probably we'll share it on Facebook Lounge. We'll, you know, we'll put it on each other's Facebook pages and try to get as many volunteers as possible because we need at least 10 people to organize the parade along with the police. So it is, it is a big undertaking. We usually started about now and we send, my mother would send faithfully every year and Carol, letters out to all the participants of the parade asking, you know, if they're going to participate and, you know, how many people and, you know, especially the groups, you know, the kids groups and stuff like that. So we want to make sure everybody, if we, like I said, if we're allowed to do it, we would like to get started on it as soon as possible.
Councilman Deweze, if you go through Councilman Natarra and give me a time for Saturday as Building to Grounds Chair, I would definitely join you guys to walk through and see what we need to do out there.
Joan, this is, this is Councilman Nataro. First off, I'd like to thank you for, for your time and for, you know, speaking tonight and, and your dedication to Northfield and the committee. I'll tell you, we need people like yourself to step up and, or these, these kind of programs will just go to the wayside, pretty much. You know, hopefully there's more people that will, you know, come out and help, of course. Myself, I would, I would love to do what I can to help you. Just tell me what to do because I really don't know what to do. Just let me know what you need me to do. Secondly, Greg and I will gladly come out on Saturday to assess the building and, and take a look and see what, you know, needs to be done out there to help.
Yeah, I'd like to do it as early as possible, maybe eight or nine o'clock so that, you know, it doesn't take up anybody's entire day just to go around the bandstand and also the building itself because of the, the dry rot that actually started last year. I talked to my mom about it last year and she was already not doing well. So we needed, you know, we really need to assess the building itself and make sure that it's in good shape. So there's no leaks and stuff like that on getting in there.
Well, we're more than happy to do that at eight, nine o'clock in the morning. You want to make it nine o'clock?
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would work. Is that?
Fine with me.
All right, that will put you in for nine o'clock Saturday. As far as the Fourth of July Parade, I think what Joan's asking for is some kind of.
You know what, Dave, I'm just, the convention's Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe at Saturday afternoon or Sunday morning.
Okay. Joan, Sunday's okay with me as well?
Yeah, I can just check with Roy to make sure because, you know, he, he is, you know, my teammate here. So I want to make sure that, so you're asking for Sunday at like nine o'clock?
Yeah, that sounds, that's.
That's fine for me. Yes, thank you.
That would be awesome. Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk to Roy. I can always get the keys from him if we can, if he can't make it.
And Joan, you have my number, I believe. You can just.
Yes.
Give me a text or something.
Joan, this is Councilman Paul Stine. With regard to the budget, the budget I have here is only summary, is a summary level. So I'll find out what we have available and I'll work, be in touch with you or Dave.
Yeah, I think there was a formal budget, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if Mary knows or not. I think that.
Well, it's, it's in our budget, but I don't have, I don't have a detailed budget in front of me, so.
Okay. I sent an email to Shannon requesting her, you know, to, to get me that information to see what, I don't know if Carol submitted it or my mom. And this was something that apparently they need to do in order to, to get this, this done for the year or so.
Right. Joan, you need to get started right away is what.
Yeah, absolutely.
So can we, should we straw poll and if we're going to do the parade? And if we have, you know, based on the fact that we have the money or we don't, you know?
Well, we don't, I don't, yeah, I've got to look at the budget and say so. It'll have to be by the next meeting or in between the next, now and the next meeting. It's not that we need to do any, I don't know that we need anything additional. If it's in the budget, then we don't need to do anything more.
All right, so the next, I'll come back to the next meeting and you can let me know or somebody can email me.
Yes, we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Brennan, it's Mary. Can you see?
Hi, hi, Mary.
Hi. I do know my office has a spreadsheet of all of the donations that were made in your mom's name. They did all go into the trust and I know Shannon will get that spreadsheet to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. That's a great help.
Anyone else here wishing to speak? Anyone else on Zoom?
I don't think so. Just one moment.
Okay.
Sounds like that could be a Boy Scout master project, maybe helping with the museum.
Okay, I do not have anyone else in Zoom who is interested in speaking.
Thank you. At that point, we'll close the public session. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone. Good luck. Back here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, excuse me. With regards to, um, there's an ordinance that was, uh, or a mask plan that was submitted to the planning board uh, with regards to the signs. Uh, did we get, did Mary, did everyone get the response back? Um, Greg, you're holding it. Did we get that letter from, um, Robin Atlas?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to address, uh, the sign, uh, ordinance in terms of banners and temporary signs. You see in the little statement that I did express some concerns and pursuant to that, I've had some conversations with Dr. Levitt. Um, you know, with the signs, with the grand openings, that's pretty clear, pretty explicit in terms of specific, specificity. But I've been noticing that there have been other signs and banners and, uh, and temporary signs that don't fall in that category. For example, uh, you know, grand, uh, you know, sales or we're open, uh, and so forth. So this is not covered and I've spoken to Mike Datalio. This is something that, uh, these types of temporary signs are not covered under this, uh, proposal with regards to grant opening. Uh, and also we had discussed what at the plan board that they would leave that option in terms of interpretation to Mr. Datalio. However, Mr. Datalio doesn't feel that because of the specificity and these types of situations, he doesn't want to be held responsible for interpretation where he gives one for, uh, granted for one and not for another. Uh, so moving forward and talking to Dr. Levitt, our chairman of the plan board, and he would be more than willing to work with us as well as Mr. Datalio that as a suggestion that these types of signs would be maybe again 30 days uh, and would have to submit a permit fee and application and so forth. So this is something that again, I don't want to be in a situation, uh, where it doesn't cover everything and we have these exceptions. And because there are these temporary signs that are not, that are appearing in our city right now that are not covered under this grand open, this is something that we need to address. So that's, uh, with regards to the sign banner ordinance. With regards to, um, Memorial Day event, uh, Shannon and I, uh, have started the, uh, discussion and uh, moving forward, hopefully to have a Memorial Day event. So I just wanted to make that announcement to everyone and it would be at our Veterans Park as we traditionally have had. Okay? And, um, lastly, uh, since, uh, we've, we've had the, uh, having our library director here, I just want to, I wasn't going to make a report. I'll just simply say that we have had, uh, or I've had discussions along with Councilwoman Madden and Councilman, uh, Ma-, uh, excuse me, Notaro, we had a meeting with the county with their proposal, initial proposal with some of the benefits of having them come along. And I will address and I, and I asked city council if there were any concerns or support. I didn't receive any other than what we had in our discussion with Councilman Perry about some of these outreach programs such as the senior citizen luncheon and meeting that we have. And I can assure you from talking to the county that they are very receptive to maintaining these outreach programs of having the, uh, senior citizens meet, uh, at the auxiliary room. They feel very important and stressed because of the uniqueness of Northfield as well as any other community that they're involved. That these outreach programs that our director has been involved will continue, will continue. All right. Uh, the, that, you know, the main goal is not to shun away anyone from the library. That would be absolutely ridiculous. They are more than receptive to having these outreach programs. Now, any type of program would necess- necessary go through the channels of application. You know, currently right now, when an organization or an event was to occur, they would apply an application to our current library director and she would, you know, you'd say yes or no. The process is the same, but this time it goes through the county. And they would make a decision. There would be a set budget, uh, for Northfield if that was, you know, if they became part of this, uh, we came, uh, part of the system. And we would then have, uh, further discussions as far as any kind of maintenance and requirements and so forth. I, I did get a copy of two different, um, maintenance, or excuse me, we, uh, lease agreements with the county and the municipality. And I think in one municipality, the only requirement was that we, they would have to pay the utility bills for the building. Uh, there would be a rental income that we would receive. And again, as I stressed at the meeting, uh, there are pros and cons of any shared services. Uh, but right now I feel confident that, uh, you know, there are some very good, more pros than cons, uh, that we would go to the county. But again, if county wishes to move forward, or excuse me, if council wishes to move forward, this is something that would have to go to a referendum for the people in Northfield to decide. Now, at this point, we have submitted our budget, uh, to the county for them to review and see what is the financial aspects in terms of if they were to, or if we were to become part of the county system. So I'm not really prepared to give more details. But however, just like with the county court administration, if and when that time comes, I will have representatives from the county come in to our city council meeting and discuss the proposal as far as the pros and cons, uh, that we can discuss to go into the county system itself. Uh, so that's the end of my report, uh, council president.
Thank you.
Unless anyone has any specific questions for me? All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, engineers report?
Thank you, Council President. I prepared my post last Friday and would like to discuss a few items of the report. I had a meeting today with public work director and Darren, uh, employee regarding, uh, the slip lining project and the asset management project. Uh, we came up with an area that I'm going to use for the slip lining, uh, specification. Next council meeting, I'll bring in the bid package for the council review. So we can go out to bid and get quote to supply certain areas in town for the sewer lines. Uh, so hopefully that will help also with the infiltration issue we're having because we are concentrating on the deep sewer lines. Regarding the asset management, I have scheduled the video lighting company to come in and video light certain areas in town. Uh, that's a requirement for the asset management. That will be starting on the next week, the 22nd of March. And, uh, we had scheduled them to be there for three, five days to finish the area. Um, so for Shepherd Drive, I received the cord sampling back from the testing company. Uh, everything's in order. They comply with the requirements of the DOT. Uh, we sent the change order to the contractors to sign it so we can proceed with the, the final change order with the, uh, deduction in contract about $15,000. Uh, I'll bring that to council meeting next, lead, next meeting when they sign it so we can authorize, so we can get that approved. So I can send up the state to close out the project and the city will receive the final payment for the grant. Uh, municipal building parking lot. We are scheduled tomorrow to, you know, parking lot. And originally we were going to pave it on Thursday. Weather seems it's going to rain, so that's going to get pushed to Friday. And, uh, the contractor for the handicap ramp, uh, the structure is coming in on Monday, the 22nd. And they will start installation that week. So it will take a week to finish the handicap ramp and the steps. Uh, and the weather is pushing that back one more day. So the contractor will push the installation a day. We had scheduled that everything should be wrapped up by the beginning of the paving. And, uh, the handicap ramp will be installed. So you can open up the building, the, the back door of the building. And then they have to come back and install, uh, the mechanical, the, the door opening for the, for the door. That will take like a day or two. So they might close that door for the day. That will be coming down and probably some of the name. Uh, and after they finish paving the parking lot for the, for the park, for the city hall, they would go to the, uh, library, the old mill and pave that section. And then they will move to Bay Avenue to finish up the paving on that project. The paving, you know, uh, Bay Avenue. Contractor thinks all this would take about in four days. So within two weeks we'll have the two parking lots finished. Uh, the Bay Avenue finished with paving. Um, I contacted the contractor also to start sorting on the back door behind the building. Uh, they need to start, uh, cleaning that up with the proper restoration is put, um, top soil and seed. And, uh, he said they would start that for, uh, they had to break into weather. I think they did some, but now it's to the poles or property following. They will finish that up. And, uh, that's my report.
Council President, I have two items, uh, with.
Yes.
Um, Rami is the cement contractor coming back to do any more work?
He's coming back to the restoration behind the curb.
Okay.
And there's other restoration, um, some residents that had issues with some of the landscaping, some of the graphics, all that.
Greg, this is, um, I don't know if, if there's any money, if there's possibly, my concern is that, um, right where the, where we're parking. Yeah, those two pieces of, on, on the sidewalk are breaking. Okay.
I'm going to bring it up to Rami. Nice, um, nice go, Rami. We'll get it replaced.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the other thing, Rami, my, my favorite complaint, but I don't know if you're aware, there's some settlement on the Roosevelt Avenue, uh, Tilton project there, uh, right as. You, you know about it?
Yeah, I know about.
Okay.
What the issue would be there at this point, uh, there's a deep sewer lateral. So I had public works video pipe that sewer lateral. There's kind of a separation at the bottom.
Yes.
That separation should not cause this problem. And a couple of weeks ago, the water company came in and they had to replace some water surfaces.
Yes.
And historically, anytime they had to show their water services, I mean, the water was leaking into the ground and causing settlements.
Okay.
So I, um, asked public, the work set to go out in the area, add more asphalt after the, the water company fixed the, the, the leak they had. We are going to put EGA and put, uh, cold patches to be temporary to see if it settles anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And if it doesn't settle, then we'll, we'll clean it up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure you, you were aware of that. All right. Thank you. Uh, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any other?
Tom, I have, um, Rami on Oak Avenue, just south of Zine. There is a, a road opening. You'll. Yeah, that, um, that patch needs to be addressed. It's, it's pretty bad right now.
They contacted the water company, but the resident's fault.
Okay.
Uh, that patch is basically they have to pave. Also, they have to remove portion of this, uh.
The curb? Okay.
But when the issue happens, everything does undermine the driveway. They couldn't pack it properly. So a portion of the driveway has to be removed and replaced and the paving.
As long as you're on top of it, um. All right, thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this point, uh, we will open the public session for anyone from the public wishing to speak on any subject. Please state your name and address for the record and observe for five minute limit per speaker. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak? We will check Zoom.
I do not have anyone in Zoom who wishes to comment.
Okay. Seeing none, we will now close the public session. Um, on resolutions, Councilman Smith, the first resolution, it cannot be part of the consent agenda. It should be separate. So are we doing that first or? Yes. Okay. So I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 67A dash 2021. Sorry.
Let me catch up and then I have to read a statement.
Okay. That's what I will. I know you are reading.
Resolution 67A is the introduction of the 2021 municipal budget. There will be no cop- public comment on the introduction of the budget and the budget synopsis will be published in the press of Atlantic City on Saturday, March 20th. Uh, the full budget is actually posted presently in the lobby of City Hall as well as on the municipal website. And the matter will be taken up through a public hearing and there will be, um, consideration for final adoption at seven o'clock on Tuesday, April 20th. That's not the next meeting. It's the 1A. Mr. Deweze?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Steen?
Yes.
Motion carries for the introduction of the 2021 municipal budget.
Okay, additional resolutions? I'd like to make the necessary motion to adopt Resolution 68 dash 2021 through 74 dash 2021 by consent agenda. Second. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member. And if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certificate of, of availability of funds. In addition, uh, one of our items, there is a executive session of council and it'll be held at the end of the meeting. And we will come back in public session to make comment for the record after the executive, executive session has concluded. Any vote made on subjects discussed will be made in public. Roll call for consent agenda?
If you could do one in favor if you want.
Oh, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to adopt. There you go. So I'd like to make the motion to adopt the consent agenda for Resolutions 68 dash 2021 through 74 dash 2021. Second. Roll call? Any, oh, any other questions?
Um, yes, I'd like to make a comment on Res- um, Resolution 72. The applicant is aware of the, uh, pending improvements to the infield at the Babe Ruth Field. So he is prepared to start four weeks after that, um, sod has been put down. He is aware of the, uh, the changes. So I think the application says April 1st, but he is aware of the circumstances.
Will be delayed. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the resolutions? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Deweze?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Steen?
Yes.
Motion carries for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Payment of bills?
I'd like to make a motion of payment of bills of $314,640.56.
Roll call. Do that by, uh, any other questions on the payment of the bills?
Mr. Deweze?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Notaro?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Steen?
Yes.
Motion carries for payment of bills.
Meeting notices?
Yes.
This is my, uh, my part. Uh, in a moment, Clark will be making a statement for the record and we will be moving into closed session discussion. After the closed session discussion, council will return to the public session and co- and a comment will be made for the record. Any vote on any matter will be made in public.
Okay. And then I just have to read a little statement? Okay, and then I just have to read a little statement. So when council moves into executive session, I will be, uh, pausing the Zoom recording as well as stopping the video. There will be no audio. Um, when the public session resumes, the Zoom recording will be turned back on, the audio will be turned back on, so any public comment made will be available to those of you who are out there participating by Zoom. As Council President Paul Steen has said, um, Resolution 74, um, was just adopted as part of the consent agenda. It is a resolution providing for an executive session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, specifically NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12B 7 regarding matters falling within the attorney-client privilege requiring confidentiality. We are required to set forth as much information as possible about the subject matter to be discussed as well as provide for the public the amount of time that can be expected to elapse before the non-public minutes can be disclosed. And for that, I will defer to the solicitor for comment.
Uh, thank you, Mary. As authorized by Resolution 74 dash 2021, at this time, the council for the city of Northfield will enter into an executive session not open to the general public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, matters to be discussed are, uh, matters, uh, falling into the attorney-client privilege requiring confidentiality, uh, specifically issues to be discussed are the city's potential possessory interests or rights, uh, to a portion of a parcel of land at Zion and Mill, uh, housing certain sewer infrastructure. Council will keep minutes of the executive session as required by law, uh, which will be approved by council and made promptly available for, for public inspection when required and permitted by, by law. Uh, at this time, that timeframe is unknown, uh, and I believe, uh, we will return for a statement for the record after the executive session is complete and I believe that executive session will take place here in council chambers.
Okay, so for those members of the public that are still with us, unfortunately, I do have to ask you to at least step into the lobby. Um, when, when the, the doors open back up, you would be able to, to re-enter the room and join the public portion of the meeting.
Did you unlock, uh, the little stopper there?
Stop off and back up.
Oh, that's.
There you go.
Is there any?
Thank you, Brad.